Planning Commission of October five, twenty twenty one. The current virtual planning commission meeting format has been undertaken by the city of Daly City in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The planning commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the line use proposal being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please register to do so at the website address that is on the screen. Thank you. And Gary, Commissioner Gary, can you do the pledge to the plaque?
Yes, Commissioner Ray. I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance to the plaque.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where we could stand. One nation under God. Indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Commissioner Gary.
You're welcome, Commissioner Ray.
Roll call, please.
Um.
Roll call.
Crumb.
President.
Pacheco.
President.
Proanio.
Here.
Villanueva is absent. Satori.
Present. Okay, uh, we have two items for tonight. Well, in case after, and this will be very fast. And in case you have anything to, uh, make any ideas or say, we'll do it during the open public appearances and all new business. Now we are going to item one. Uh. Use permit. U P R seven, one nine, thus one four, one four eight and design review. Uh. Design coastal development permit of Tom Swarmer presenting A T and T wireless process construct a new seventy foot offices. Monopine wireless facility with nine panel antennas behind the existing church located at two, two, zero Avalon Drive. The proposed facility is in the resource protection or R P overlay zoning district and therefore requires issuance of coastal development permit. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Act or C Q, C Q, pursuant to C Q guidelines, section one, five, three, three, two, infield development projects, A P N zero, zero, eight, thus zero, five, one, thus one sixty. Uh. Engineer Brian Fallon, this is some planner represented.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna start my screen share. Um, it, it, right now it says host disabled screen sharing, but I have a presentation to, to load if, if someone can allow me to do that.
Sure. Try now, Brian.
All right. There we go. Okay. The first item before you this evening is the use permit and design review for the proposed monopine cellular facility. Monopine is a, um, an artificial pine tree, uh, made, made to, uh, made to look like a tree, um, to, um, as opposed to using just a metal tower to, uh, uh, attached to cell antennas to. And the project is located, um, behind the Korean Baptist Church at two, twenty Avalon Drive. Um, and it is proposing the, um, monopine with the antennas mounted uh, on the monopine and then the, uh, an equipment pad on the ground to contain the, uh, associated equipment. So, uh, the project proposes to construct a seventy foot tall monopine cellular tower and construct associated equipment within an adjacent fenced enclosure on the ground. The monopine would hold twelve six foot panel antennas and would be situated at the rear of the existing property approximately thirty-two feet from the rear property line and sixty-five and seventy-five feet from the north and south property lines respectively. Here is a vicinity map. Uh, the project is located on the west side of Avalon Drive and it is just south of the intersection with Westmore Avenue. The proposed facility would be located at the rear of the church building and would be set back from the edge of the bluff by fifty feet, um, as determined by the city engineer. And you can see the edge of the bluff and the fifty foot setback line in the slide. Um, the edge of the bluff is just, just beyond the actual real rear property line. Here is a proposed elevation for the cell antenna and adjacent to the cell antenna, you can see, um, a small equipment enclosure and that is backing up to that, the church building. And this slide indicates a photo simulation. Um. Vantage point taken from Skyline Boulevard, Highway thirty-five, looking westbound. Um, and from, from this vantage point, it appears to be a tree adjacent to some other trees. And we have another vantage point here. Um, this is from the corner of, um. Let me just, I blame, I didn't jot down the street name, but this is, this is the, uh, the corner just down the street from the church um, that runs along the, the edge of the bluff, um, looking northbound toward the church and you can see the arrow points out the proposed monopine and you can see there are adjacent trees and it, it blends in well to detract from what would ordinarily be just a metal, metal tower. Oh, I did, sorry, the, the corner, um, that that vantage point was taken from was North, North Ridge Drive. So staff has reviewed their proposal under the requirements of the California Env- Environmental Quality Act C Q and has determined that the project as conditioned will not result in significant adverse environmental impacts and is exempt from environmental review pursuant to C Q guidelines, section fifteen, three, oh, three for small construction. Staff has found that the subject prop, project is consistent with the general plan, the local coastal plan and the R one single family residential district standards and together with the provisions for its design and improvements would not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals or comfort and general wel- welfare of the neighborhood. The city has received a report from a California licensed civil engineer concluding that the placement of the addition of the tower and its equipment is feasible from a geo, geotechnical engineering perspective and this, that site stabilization require, structures would not be necessary during the twenty-five year life expectancy of the project. There is no evidence in the public record contrary to this conclusion. The city has also received a report from a licensed geologist concluding that the placement of the addition will not likely impact or be impacted by geologic site conditions or those of the surrounding area. There is no evidence in the public re- record contrary to this conclusion. Staff recommends, uh, that the planning commission forward use permit U P R five, twenty-one, fifteen, oh, one, five and design review, D R seven, nineteen, fourteen, one, four, nine to the city council for approval. And this completes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. I have a set of the plans, uh, with me and I will exit screen sharing. I think, there we go. Okay. Um, I believe also the applicant is in attendance and would be also available to answer any additional questions.
Is Mr. Thorn Swarmer here?
Good evening.
Tom Johnson.
Oh, Tom Johnson, okay, thank you very much. Well, before, before I open this to the public, uh, let me first hear from my fellow commissioners if they have any questions or concern about this project.
May I speak?
Go ahead, Mr. Esa.
Thank you. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, I, I'm gonna ask questions pro, I would guess possibly, uh, if I was living in that vicinity, if, um, I had a family growing there and, you know. My concern are just in, in general, if you could explain, uh, so this tower, uh, I'm, I'm assuming tower, these towers are for cell phones, correct? And it shows A T and T, uh, for the carriers, right? So when they say that we don't see any harm, I'd like to, if you could explain briefly how this tower works and what does it, it does it, uh, you know, have any like, you know, like a microwave, you turn the microwave on and it has, you know, microwaves or, I mean, what, how does it work? If you could explain and then that way, if anyone's watching or is interested in that.
Would you like me to give an explanation and then possibly Tom or applicant can add, add to that further?
Sure.
So, so the, any kind of cellular equipment or, um, or similar devices requi- um, require, there's, there's, I think it's federal mandated radio frequency levels. Um, and so whenever the city takes in any kind of application for a cell antenna or a modification to, um, a cell antenna, the applicant is required to provide R F reports by licensed engineers that show the levels of, um, of radio frequency generated by the antennas and the associated equipment and that it is within federal guidelines. Um, and so those, those have been, uh, provided, um, as part of the application um, and were well, well within the, the federal regulations.
That doesn't get into my answer, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What I'd like to understand is, is just for the, for the people that live in that neighborhood, um, for people who might be living near one, how does it work? And you know, is there any percentage of some sort of, I don't know, I don't wanna, how do I say it, like an output? Um, that could possibly at some point we find out later, it's gonna hurt the people around them. That, that's what I'm just curious about. And, and, and maybe this is, when you say radio waves, um, you know, is there a certain level, can the animals hear it? You know, can people hear it? I mean, you know, I don't know, I'm just asking that question.
So I, I believe that, um, our applicant probably could answer that question a little better than I could. Um, my, my, my understanding of the radio frequency is with, within, within certain, certain higher levels, it could potentially be, I, it's not something that you would hear, but I, I suppose it could potentially be, be harmful when, when, um, it's within hot, higher levels. But, um, the federal guidelines, um, you know, state that any, you know, any of the equipment must, must be below a certain standard.
Michael, you wanna explain what you're showing?
Okay, can I, can I just say something first before you continue? I think the, the message here, the concern here of, uh, Commissioner Teresa is what she means, the electromagnetic field, which emit a lot of, I would say, I don't know how, how much it can emit, especially if all telephones are being used. This is, I don't know the maximum or the minimum, this electromagnetic field. It is not how you use the telephone, it's electromagnetic field. Continue, uh, this is, this is the concern of Teresa. Thank you very much.
Sure, or, or, or is it the, or is it the safety you're concerned about? I, I, I think that's where, where Teresa's trying to go, right?
Thank, yeah, both of you, correct. Uh, I, I'm looking, I'm, what I'm asking is, you're right in people's backyards, there's homes all around. What, what, I mean, obviously, you're not gonna go at a maximum level that could possibly, let's say, hurt somebody, but then we don't know, do we? I mean, this had, this technology hasn't been around.
Teresa, if I may, you remember when we, uh, did, uh, very much the same thing over there by, um, Puliseta and John, uh, Robert Kennedy School, Guadalupe Parkway, we did the same thing over there. And in that, the report was, it was, uh, minimal to what was considered the R F output that would be damaging to surrounding people. There were concerns raised, uh, by the neighborhood for the schoolchildren. And these apparently do not meet what the government considers a dangerous level under any circumstances.
I, I appreciate that, Rick. Uh, I guess my other question is, is how long has this technology been out? And so how many years have they been able to check and make sure that it, in fact, is not harmful? That's all.
That's a good question, but I think it's been out for a while, quite honestly.
At least, I'm sure, twenty years or so, right? Thirty?
Ten, fifteen, maybe twenty.
There you go. So, um, do we have any?
The concern of Commissioner Teresa is well, well taken because, you know, this is under the new technology, this is the five G, it's, this is more stronger than, than the last fifteen years or five years. It is only two point five gig, gig, gigabytes, but now it's five G, so it's the, the, the level of, I would say, the magnetic field is stronger. That's why I, I concur with Teresa when, when that question was raised. Let, let, let the expert explain this.
Exactly, yes.
Mister Tom Johnson, you recognize?
I don't know, Tom, did you wanna speak to this? Um, I have the R F study that we can show.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. So, um, thank you, Commission, for your time this evening. Um, I am understanding and, you know, listening to the concerns and the questions raised by the, by the commission. Um, just as, as an educational standpoint, so, you know, wireless communications have been around for thirty plus years. There's been data, reports, analysis, I mean, you name it, you could find it on the internet based on, um, what it is that you're looking for. If you wanna find negative results, you can find negative results. If you wanna find positive results, you can find positive results. That's just a matter of circumstance based on, um, you know, what it is you're after when you're looking in the net. The data, however, shows in the report that's provided to the city, which is done by a licensed, um, electrical engineer who studies and performs this analysis routinely, day in and day out for all the wireless carriers. We show that on a maximum level, so you take a, you look at the spectrum of zero to one hundred percent. One hundred percent equals what the F C C says. You can emit at this or transmit at this level without any, um, warning signs, without any in notification to the general public at a hundred percent. Anything over a hundred percent, you just need to have a notification of general, to general public use. We are at seven point nine two percent at ground level of the, the maximum permissible emissions level. When you look at that, so, and that, that's just at ground level by the antenna facility. If you're out at the street level, you're, um, you know, by the sidewalk, you're probably at, at zero at that point. The transmission level, i- it is a radio frequency standard. It is not a, um, it is not a, uh, um, a radiation transmitted aspect, which I think there's a lot of misconstruing and I'm not understanding the, the true nature of what wireless communication is. Think of it as the same thing of your TV or your radio, it's transmitting via the airwaves, certain signals that the recipient is gonna receive and utilize. Same thing with wireless communications. Although we are progressing over the last thirty years, we've gone from, um, now from first generation to now we're in the fifth generation. All that means is basically the technology is advancing every so often. Typically, we see, and I've been in this business twenty-three years. We've seen this, this technology advance from, you know, in the last twenty years alone, it's really gone from two G to five G. And with that is the advent of what we're using and what we are consuming as recipients of this technology on a daily basis. Everyone has a wireless phone. Everyone streams from their phone, everyone does texting from their phone. What five G enables is, all that is, is faster data downloads and data output. So you're looking at, um, if you're looking at a video on your phone, all that essentially means is you're gonna get that data faster instead of delays in the upload or the download. Whereas four G, three G, two G, each one of those progressive changes in technology added functionality. And so you're looking at, you know, when we went from two G to three G, that allowed faster texting. And you looked at what two G, three G and four G did, it was, you know, now we got to, ooh, I could watch something on my phone or I could, um, you know, not sit there and scroll and watch the, uh, the dial turn on my phone while I'm trying to either listen to music or watch a video. Five G only just enables faster data. And there's a lot of, um, you know, misunderstanding about what that really is in, in the, in the general community. One of the key components, though, to, um, you know, it's kind of the federal regulations is that the F C C sets the limits. And they say, this is what you're allowed to do, this is what you're allowed to, um, transmit at and follow the guidelines. Municipalities are also under the same mandate to a certain degree. Municipalities, technically, the, the conversation about emissions and emission standards and what it does to the general public is inadmissible to planning commission purview. It's really the, the, the per, what the, the use is, is what is under review, not what it does to the general public, because we've proven that what the standards are, we need them.
Okay, uh, Mister Johnson, you know, this commission is very proactive and always take a look at the public interest and general welfare of the people. And that is why we are asking this question, because I remember about three or four years ago, there was a massive adverti- advertisement against China's five G, because they said it, five G, if you're going to put it in America, there will be, this is cancerous, this is a lot of, uh, problem. You remember that? Uh, because, uh, China was ahead of us, uh, sorry to say. China was ahead of the five G and they're conquering, uh, Europe. Now it came to America, now you are justifying this, that's why we, we, this is a, a democratic way of expressing ourselves here, Mister Johnson.
Understood, understood.
That's why we would like really to have an expert to you and it, if you have an expert, then we believe you. That is why this is a, a process wherein, wherein have to argue what, what is the truth, what is correct and what is good for the public. That is why, if you think that is just an amicature, it's five G, then so be it. Uh, but if I, if I read anything else that is contrary to your view, probably we, we, we don't know about that, because according to experts, result of the problem can only occur after five years to ten years. That's why we don't know if it'll, this will maybe a problem. So I'm just expressing my views in support of Teresa.
Thank you. And, and, and just to let you know, I, I mean, we, I mean, we all have computers and cell phones and iPads and all that, and we do want them to work. So we understand where you're coming from, but it's our, just so you understand it, it's our job to speak for the public. That's what our job is. Our job is, is even if I say, oh, great, you know, I can have better cellphone coverage or whatever. That's not the case, the case is we still have to ask these questions.
That is why, besides, there, there's nothing politics about it, but it's just a matter of perception. So that's why we have to, you have to convince us this is, this is probable. According to Commissioner Reed, and this has been proven before, that is why I said at the time, what we approved was two G, two point four G, and now this is five, five G, this is a higher version of the gigabytes. That's why we have to convince that it's, there is no increase in, 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 in the matter of magnetic field or the basic radio frequency. We have to, to sit through the, what is the truth here?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Trust me, I, I get the, the concerns in the, the statements. I just, as a point of clarity, I just wanna understand, do, do we have a city attorney present at the planning commission?
We have here, Miss Kelly Scott. Chuck.
Yes, hello, thank you, for the chair, good, good evening.
Good evening. Um, you know, I would welcome your input as well as to the purview under, um, this discussion standpoint.
Well, I, I think that the planning, um, staff has done a great job of outlining the E M F report and how it complies with F C C and with, within the F C C guidelines. Um, there is no potential harm and the planning commission can move forward and accept that report.
If I might, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
It's, it's interesting, to the best of my knowledge, this time around, there was no, uh, negative public input, which we had received in prior times with these antennas. So, uh, maybe the public concerns have quieted and this has become more, uh, just a fact of life rather than some new innovation coming in that could potentially cause harm.
If, if I may, Mike, you said you have the R F study available. Could you give what the maximum F C C limits would be for, um, the exposure and what the exposure of this facility would be so that we can understand how it relates to the standard?
Can you answer that, Mister John Johnson?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe Michael just put it up.
Yeah, I mean, uh, one of the pieces of information the city requires before we even begin processing an application like this is to understand the extent to which the proposed facility complies with the federal regulations regarding, um, R F exposure. Anyway, um, I've highlighted the text from the R F study that was received from the applicant on this particular tower. And just as, uh, Mister Johnson had explained, the, the level at the near sidewalk is seven point nine two percent of the F C C's occupational limit. Um, the analysis went further and conducted a worst case predictive modeling scenario. And, um, under that scenario, at the ground street level, the maximum power, and I'm just reading the last sentence, um, density generated by the antennas would be twenty-one point five percent of the general public limit. Um, so the facilities are well below the maxims established by the federal government for such a facility. And, um, the staff feels comfortable, of course, with recommending approval based on this, uh, data that was prepared by the applicant's consultant.
What is allowable, Mike? What is allowable, uh, present dates?
Well, we'd have to get into the numbers in the study, um. It looks like the, um, table on this sheet shows the, uh, the maximum exposure levels, occupational and public. And I'm not a, um, R F expert, so I don't know, you know, exactly, you know, how to explain.
I don't understand this.
Yeah, we look at the, you know, as planners, we take in the study and we, we read the bottom line. Um, and that's the paragraph that I'd explained previously. I don't know, Tom, if you can get any, any more detail.
I, I, I can only validate it if I was talk with the, some of my friends in state, state to, or what is allowable and what is not allow, allowable, something like that. I, I really don't understand this yet, to be honest with you. But there you go, electromagnetic.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Let's just say for the sake of it, that, you know, uh, as we read that part, Michael. Let's just say for the sake of it that, you know, uh as we read that part, Michael, it says that the level's seven point yeah plus and then the, there you are. So it's seven point nine two and that the uh it says um maximum is thirty-nine point six. So let's just say for the sake of it, seven point nine two, it's not high, it's on ground level, it's great, it's perfect. My question that is, um these lives, these type of towers, I guess their life, uh they could be ten, twenty years, let's say twenty years. Would there be any changes once this is in place or would it always be the level that we're we're approving?
Well, there could be subsequent towers approved. The city always requires that the analysis that are conducted for these be cumulative, meaning that it take into account existing other facilities in the area.
Pardon me, what I meant was, could this tower that we have that we're discussing and it's at this percentage, could could AT&T make it stronger? Could they fiddle with it, you know, once they're in place, could it be worse than what, you know? Right now, it looks fine.
Through the through the chair, um if I may, uh my understanding is that they have to uh submit EM, they have to submit these reports either on an annual or um a periodic basis to ensure that they do not exceed the standards set by the FCC.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Teresa, the science could always change. The, this is something that's new enough. We learn by experience.
That's true. Anything, any any others who would like to ask question before I open this to the pub- public? Gary, do you have any question?
None. Uh all my all my concerns were addressed.
Okay, that is why uh we are trying to to make a a a a very laudable uh suggestion here. That's why before we we we, I I would say we are thinking commissioners here. Everybody, uh we we have a a good rapport with the city council, that's why. And that's why we are asking this Mister Tom Johnson about this because I I I remember very well when I was still young, about seven years old. My mother always said, don't don't buy this microwave oven because it emits, it can you can you can be contaminated with the the so-called, it it or I mean cancerous stuff like, even now, people are saying, don't go near the microwave oven if you're heating something else because it emits a lot of the uh magnetic field or. So that's our concern, Mister Johnson.
Commissioner Satori, and I appreciate what you're saying right there. I just want.
And we are concerned about this and that's why we have to explain this to the public. That uh why are are we approving this? Is it the truth?
I I wanna.
We 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 build, we will and better transit with them or what, even even the other uh commission here. So they're asking this question not to, not really to to make it hard for us. Because we need development here in Daly City. I I I am one for it. But we have to really scrutinize things as they come. Okay, and any more question from our fellow commissioners?
No.
Do we have any uh body, they took the, I'm not opening this for public hearing.
We have no speakers.
No, no, nobody?
We don't even have any participants other than the folks you see on the.
Okay, so I'm going to ask another question to Brian. When you talk of geologic conditions, how about the soil? Did you test the soil?
Yes, there were two different uh report reports prepared. Um there was a a soils report prepared, also attached, um where they found that um it it would, it it would not create any erosion or any requirements for um retrofitting to adjacent structures, stabilization.
Is the soil soap or hard? Would you consider it, uh what what in what category?
I I I don't, I wouldn't be able to answer the question whether it's soft or hard. What I can, what I can tell you is that the soils engineer provided a report saying that that um certifying that it was good for the twenty-five-year life expectancy of the project that it would not create uh erosion and it would not re- require any stabilization of adjacent, of this structure or adjacent structures for, at least during the twenty-five-year life expectancy of of the proposed antenna.
Well, the life expect expectancy is twenty-five years. How about the the structure, I mean? You know, you you're already near the house, assuming there is an earthquake, if there is an earth movement.
Certifies both that no, that both that if the stable, the soil is stable for the twenty-five-year life expectancy of the antenna and that no sta- additional stabilization methods would be required to protect the adjacent structures.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh any more que- and as much as there is no uh public comment. Anybody who wants to move this to close to public hearing?
Second.
And seconded that we uh close to public hearing. Uh motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of October five, twenty twenty-one. Second, we move the seconded that we uh uh adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of October five, twenty twenty-one. Motion carried. A motion to approve the environmental assessment.
I make a motion to accept.
Seconded by Commissioner Rick to approve the environmental assessment. Unanimous. Uh motion to recommend approval of use permit UPR dash seven dash nineteen dash one four one four eight and design review BR dash seven dash one nine dash one four one forty-nine. Hostile development permit, subject to the condition outlined in staff report of October five, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Rock, rock for please.
From?
I.
Pacheco?
I.
Proanio?
I.
Satori?
Yes. So this is unanimously approved to address to Mister Tom Johnson and gratulation. And uh when is this going to go to the city council?
It's gonna be October twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much. So Mister Tom Johnson, you can follow this up to them. Item number two will be uh, yes?
Okay. No, I just said, I'm just, thank you.
Thank you very much and have a good day. Item number two will be done by planning manager, Michael, Son Change Z C dash nine twenty-one dash one five two forty. A request by the California or city of Daly City to amend chapter seventeen point thirty-six home occupation of the Daly City municipal code for the purpose of allowing micro enterprise home kitchen operation or MECO and other food preparation used as allowable home occupation. The project exempt from Secoa, Per Secoa guidelines, one five zero six one dash B and three reviews per exception. The project affects all parcel citywide. Okay, you can take the floor, Mister, Mister Michael. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you Chairman Satori and members of the planning commission. The city of Daly City is proposing to amend the city's zoning ordinance and more specifically the home occupation section of the zoning ordinance to allow micro enterprise home kitchen operations. The acronym for that is a MECO and so I'll refer to those um as MECOs throughout the presentation. In short, a MECO is a food facility that is operated by a resident in their private home kitchen, so in their house. Once permitted, a resident can store, handle, prepare and serve food to the public as allowed by state law just like a restaurant would. Um the state law places limits on the number of meals that can be served, the revenue that can be received and on some of the foods that can be prepared among other requirements and we'll review what those are. Um and as all in indicate in the in this presentation, a county health permit is also required. So the genesis of MECOs in California came from the state legislature. The state in twenty nineteen, I believe, adopted eighty-seven twenty-six amending the Health and Safety Code of California to allow MECOs as a new type of retail food facility that would allow um the residents of California to operate essentially a restaurant in their private residence. The, there was a subsequent bill that um cleaned up eighty-six twenty-six, eighty-three seventy-seven that was adopted also um in twenty nineteen, which banned the production, manufacturing, processing, freezing packaging of milk or milk products and allowed uh for the restriction of third-party delivery systems as part of um MECOs um to individuals with mental and or physical conditions. So it the the gist of this slide is that the state of California uh is what uh, you know, the the body that essentially came up with the idea of allowing MECOs. And all of the cities in Cali- well, many of the cities in California have been um gone to some extent to allowing them. Um it's a lot of words on the screen, so I'll try and summarize permits for MECOs are issued by the County of San Mateo. In the case of uh Daly City, of course, we're in San Mateo County. The county uh Department of Environmental Health Services would issue the permits for MECOs inside Daly City. So the city of Daly City itself would not be giving the permits for such facilities. The county of San Mateo, as an agency of the state, would be issuing those. The the bills that I mentioned previously do require, however, that the city council um of the city of Daly City City Council and all of the city councils or the county board of super supervisors in California give some side, sort of nod to this activity within their community, some sort of permission. And so what we are proposing to do is basically exempt um the uh MECO facilities from acquiring a home occupation permitted in Daly City. So that is the way that we're so to speak, blessing this sort of an activity within Daly City. As I'd mentioned before, there are limitations placed on MECOs and these are established by uh the county of San Mateo and um the error is follows. The MECO operator must be a resident of the home who must pass an accredited food safety exam. Not one, not more than one full-time employee. Uh food food employee, not including a household member, can work at the site. So an employee actually is allowed to come to the property to work at the makeup, but just one. The food must be prepared, cooked, served, picked up and or delivered on the same day. No leftover food can be used as part of the preparation for next day's service or sold on subsequent days. And no more than thirty individual or approximate equivalent meals per day and no more than sixty individual or approximate equivalent meals per week may be prepared and served. Um there are limits placed on the amount of of money that can be essentially made and as part of a MECO, and that's fifty thousand dollars in great gross annual sales. Um there's an adjustment every year based on CPI for that. Uh but the idea here is that the uh operation should be kept at a modest scale. There's not any intention that the restaurateur, so to speak, would, you know, um run an operation that uh was a five hundred thousand dollar a year uh revenue sort of a project. So these are intended to be kept on a smaller scale. Food must be sold directly to consumers for consumption on the premises, pickup or delivery and not provided to a wholesale or other retail food operation. So this isn't some sort of a staging business where the food is prepared and then shipped off to a larger restaurant somewhere else. There are specific res- uh prohibitions placed on each MECO. For example, smoking food and use using food additives as a method of preservation or serving uh raw oysters, those things would not be allowed as part of a MECO. MECOs furthermore prohibited from posting any type of signage or other outdoor displays and must comply with local noise ordinances in the city of Daly City. Excessive noises prohibited past ten P M in residential areas. So the specific text that uh the city staff is proposing to amend in the zoning ordinance is uh related to the definition of a home occupation. And this is a verbatim uh text from that section. We're proposing the underlined text be added. And that is any MECO as defined by uh section one one three eighty-five of the California Health and Safety Safety Code shall not be considered a home occupation for the purpose of this section. Such uses shall be instead permitted to operate subject to state and county laws and guidelines. So this is uh the way that the city of Daly City would permit MECOs to operate inside Daly City by exempting them from the home occupation section. The proposals exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and the city staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt findings that are identified in the staff report find the proposed regulations exempt from Secoa and recommend that the city council approve the zone text amendment that I just described um and allow MECOs as described in the uh staff report presented to the planning commission. Is any questions? We'll try our best to answer them.
Okay, before I open this to the public, uh let me ask my fellow commissioners if they have any question or any query or any or any uh clarification.
Just, I would just clear.
Ahead, Commissioner address.
I mean, thank you, through the chair. Um the uh so if someone wanted to, it's not just a restaurant, they could bake or it could be like baking from home, cakes, wedding cakes. Um sometimes a lot of people do that already anyway, so it's just a nice way to make it legal.
Well, that's a slightly different thing. Um that's called cottage food, I believe, what you may have just described. Um and tha- that's also allowed um in San Mateo County and we do permit those as part of um as part of a home occupation. Those are not exempt from the whole occupation regulations, um not yet anyway. Um this is actually having people come to your home and serving them a hot meal and charging them for it, just like a restaurant would. But just to be clear.
Okay. So it it's not like a catering, is it like catering?
No, it's not a catering thing, no.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh can I, can I have a a question here, get uh Michael?
Yes.
Okay, can you make a a model to us uh when we say microeconomic enterprise? So can can you give me some, a a model?
Do you want an example of what a MECO might? Yeah, sure. Um it's um, you know, it's a single-family detached home with um you know, maybe the person who owns the home or resides in the home is somebody who, you know, makes great filet mignon and they wanna share their culinary skills with the public and they set up some sort of a, you know, a website where people who are traveling to the area could
Because uh.
Enjoy that.
Okay, because in the Philippines and even Italy, I have seen it, this is very prevalent, every every everybody's doing it. That's why when I heard this, uh uh it's about high time that the Daly City can be a model also here, because a lot of people are doing it anyway. But now if you want to to have this, uh I would say legitimize, then it will be a good, good, good move to put to the city and we uh we should, you can earn more on this. I'm glad that uh uh this economic tribute will be forthcoming. And a lot of people in Daly City will be happy about this because anyway, they're doing it like baking cake. Lumpya, they they normally deliver this to your house for special uh maid. So it's about high time that this micro enterprise home kitchen operation be operational. And I am really endorsing this because it's high time, especially now it's pandemic. It it can be delivered by Uber or Lyft. It's it's a very pragmatic way of encouraging also uh people in, especially in Daly City. Anyway, some people are doing it anyway, so that's my statement. An- anymore from my colleague who wants to express reviews?
Uh just through the chair, I'm sorry, Michael, you you were mentioning, because I said something like, you know, cakes or bread or you know, a tea shop, you know. You know, a tea shop, you know, invite you over for tea and crumpets, you know. So, so are you saying that's different than what we're looking at right now? This is more of a restaurant type of thing?
This is more of a restaurant, and I think that the flavor of this is that. Person who operated these, it's it's sort of an incubation sort of a thing where. They operate, you know, a very small type of a. Restaurant out of their home, and if they're successful at it, then they can move to a, you know, a retail type space. I I believe that's part of the intent to allowing these is to get people started on, you know. Their vision for, you know, preparing served meals and being able to move on to a larger space, you know, in a retail corridor or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, any more question before we open this to the public? Rick, Commissioner Rick, do you have any question?
No.
Okay. Gary.
No, I don't.
Hey. We are now going to open this to the public. Any, anybody who wants to, we have any, anybody to take to?
We have nobody to speak on this item.
Okay, any motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we move the seconded that we close this public hearing. Okay, now. Motion to approve this, to approve this, I don't see.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We move the seconded that we approve this. Record please.
Uh, Crump.
I.
Pacheco.
I.
Pro Anio.
I.
Satori.
Yes, when is this going to the council?
This one actually, because it's a change to the ordinance, we have to set time in place. So I think this one is lined up to go to the first meeting in November.
Oh, good. I think this is a very good project, I assume. Okay. We have this now, so. Next will be. Public appearances, stop communication, anybody who wants to say something, this is open sesame. Anybody, well, I would like to say something because. Thank you very much. I would like to thank the staff of the city for the topic of diversity, inclusion, connectivity. I hope everybody of us have this certificate of completion. Thank you, and among others. I hope that the city management can continue this process of orientation, especially to the city council and the board commission. And I encourage the city management to continue on this. This is a very laudable project, especially to the city council, planning commissioner and board. And other commissions. Especially not also, not only this kind, but like the parliamentary respect of cortices. About conflict of interest, economic activities for the welfare and general interest of the community. This is, we, we are a small city and we should cultivate and bring to the city the honor and dignity. That the people of the city deserves. Let us aside political chicken curry at the expense of the people of the community. Let us not allow the abuse of respect and cortices among us. We have to fight always for what is good for the community and for the city. Economic activities and social dynamic among us should be encouraged to be good. With this, I would like to say thank you to all. We will not be here forever in the city, but at least we can have a legacy that we can say that we made a contribution to the city. Thank you very much. And anymore, anyone who would like to say something before we adjourn this meeting? If anything, Teresa. Okay, so with this, any motion to adjourn the meeting until the next time?
Second.
We move the seconded. Bye Kelly, bye Brandon is here. And to the rest, thank you very much and.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, everyone, be safe.
Take care.